I'd like to convene as the Walworth County Planning and Zoning Board. Is there any old business? New business?
There is not a motion for adjournment.
They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
You got a second? Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed. I'd like to convene as the Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Discussion regarding Hall Road Agreement.
The stuff that you guys talked about on Hall Road Agreement on Appendix B, Part D, that's been taken off. And on page sixteen, they have named Jeremy Hoffman as their initial developer representative, and his name has been added to it on page sixteen.
Now Deb, do you want to go through some of that other stuff you kind of had to suggest a little bit, or?
On the findings of fact?
No, like on page fourteen.
Oh, yeah. On, um, on page one, there are exact specifications of what they need to provide for that Appendix B, like the detailed project area map, stuff like that. And then on page two, number five, it actually specifies how many copies we need and what size paper it needs to be on. And these things have to be provided prior to construction. And then I thought maybe it wouldn't hurt to reread eight point one on page twelve.
Now I did that, Deb, how? What are you not really agreeing with?
Well, I, I even need to look, let me look at it. And I don't know that I'm really not agreeing with it. It's just that I thought maybe we should be just kind of aware of more.
How it's stating it?
What's that?
How it's stated.
Yeah, just that we, we need to be aware of all that stuff that, you know, that we have in here. There's some of those things about designated roads and I just, and land rights and stuff. I just think, make sure you're kind of familiar with that, is probably my point. And then on page seventeen, my question was, do we have the proof in hand of everything on, um, him ten eighteen? And my understanding is, we probably can't get those, um, proof of insurance and compensation and stuff until we start construction, is that correct, Jamie? So, just so you're aware, that we still need those, you know, those are things we're going to need even after we approve the Hall Road Agreement. There's stuff that we're going to be needing from them on an ongoing basis.
Well, just Jamie, my question is, I mean, what do they just say before we start, if they start construction, that, then they show us that stuff?
Correct. Before they start, they're going to need to show us that stuff.
And we need copies of it. And Jamie, or Jeremy brought Greg, all the original copies of the variance, the conditional use permit, all, we needed the originals and our records of those, so we have those now.
Did he return that? He was going to show you that?
He did. The map. And all he does, I'll bring it, but all he designated was the four miles from Highway So we have two copies of this map, one for them and one for us. And the highlighted yellow is the only stuff that he does, that's the Hall Road Agreement. And it's just those four miles from Highway Twelve. That project.
The map is just right now.
Like this?
Wow, they're way west of there.
Well, it was okay for me. I'm sorry. But, so that, anything, anything that they designate now comes under that Hall Road. They are able to designate stuff at a later date, but they have to come back in here, and it will have to be agreed upon by you and them and Gary, right?
And the process would start for them.
And then those would then become designated roads and fall under the Hall Road Agreement. If, you know, if they were accepted. Because like, when Jeremy first came in, his intention, he had kind of outlined everything. His intention was that it's a gravel pit, the road past his place, he had quite a bit. And then I said, remember that whatever you highlight on here is under that Hall Road Agreement from the hip goal. And then he went and talked to Jamie, and then he came back, and this is all he designated.
Yes.
So if, I mean, if I understand that correctly, if he were to come back, or they were to come back at a later date, if this is what we agree to on this part of it, and they want to put any other road in, what it does is it totally automatically falls under the Hall Road Agreement. But we have to go through a whole process of approving that, both ending them, is that right?
Just, just the, what you would do is probably do an addendum to this, and then you would start the process as far as finding out what condition the road's in, and all of that stuff. And that's the process that I was talking about that needs to be done.
So there wouldn't be any testing or stuff of those roads until they designate that?
And that's what-
And that's where that would start that process.
Right, and when he came in, that's what he and I talked about, is he said, I said, you don't want to overreach too much because you're paying for that, as far as, I said, if you determine at a later date that you want to add other roads and make them part of that Hall Road Agreement, that would be the time to make the changes then, so you don't have to expend as much money making it, and you may not even use it. And he was in agreement on that.
Did you review all this, and do you see any problems with this?
On the Hall Road Agreement, no. As, as modified, no.
I think Jeremy intends to be here today, no?
He called me this morning, he must have brought his kid to the doctor in Aberdeen. He said he could be on the phone, but he said he had to take his kid to the doctor.
And then, um, I think Gary will talk about it somewhat in here, under his, talk about the Hall Road Agreement too, I think I'm not positive.
I mean, just, uh, yeah, this is, um, as approved by the commission, I would still authorize, you need to authorize somebody to sign it, correct?
We have a page in there for signatures.
And then we would give it to Jeremy, have him sign it, which would officially start the process.
But we have to have the findings of fact.
For the conditional use permit, yes.
No, for bits, we have-
You're right, never mind.
We need it all, but this goes with the conditional use permit, the finding of fact, all are tied to that conditional use permit.
But, yeah, they all go together.
Pretty much, yeah.
But they all stand on their own, too.
Okay, yeah, that I, I, I don't know.
So this, this part, do you feel that everything's good with?
Correct.
So do we need to, as far as motions or anything, as far as approval, or this has already been approved, correct?
If you've already, if we've already approved, and I would have to look in a minute for sure, if you've already approved it last meeting, I can't remember if the, do you have it? So you would do a motion to approve this agreement?
The only thing that was approved was, the conditional use permit was approved contingent on coming to an agreement on this Hall Road Agreement. That's the only thing that's been approved so far.
So you'd want to have a motion to approve it, and another motion to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the county?
I'll make a motion to approve the Hoffman project for, as amended.
They got a motion on the floor, I'll need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
Being as you put Jeremy at a point of contact, do we still need Maurice's signature on the back, or Jeremy's?
Um, my understanding is that, um, Vaughn Beck, I think, said he could sign it for Maurice, but then I would have to have paperwork that allowed that to, Maurice still is the owner of the, he's still the one who applied and owns the land, is Maurice.
So then Jeremy's just being the power attorney, or whatever word you do.
We would just have to attach the power attorney where Maurice gave Jeremy authority to sign this document.
Right now, he's just what they call the initial developer representative. That's what we did on page sixteen.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so then when we called, we-
I need to do a voiceful just here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed. Discussion regarding findings of fact, motion to accept.
Does everybody, everybody's got copies of, there's two copies?
I put one, I put one in front of everybody.
One, one is the dictated findings of fact from three, that last-
February fourth, I think.
Anyway, um, then this morning, or last night, and stuff we went through and tried to type up the written findings of fact, and basically just went off of the dictated stuff, put it in a written form. Um, and I don't know, we just wanted everybody to kind of go through that and, and make sure that, not knowing exactly how this was supposed to be written, how it was supposed to be done, we just kind of tried to make it a, a written form document, I guess.
Could Greg and I see a copy of that?
Oh, yes. And I don't know, Jamie, if you-
That's how you would want to do it. It's like that, each number, and then, like, say we're at six D screening and buffering with reference to locations, availability, and character, there are no screenings or shelter valves planned due to the snow concerns for the existing buildings, um, yeah, and everyone is in agreement, so that's fine.
Okay, we just, we didn't think it needed to be super detailed-
Nope, doesn't-
-but it was one of those things that we wanted to make sure that we touched all bases.
Yep, that's exactly right. That's exactly how you want to do it. And actually, you don't even really need it all in agreement, because you're going to all vote to approve these anyhow, so it could all be in agreement anyhow.
Okay, yeah, we, I didn't know, we went through every state-
Nope, you're fine.
-deal, but, um, believe, we talked to, yeah, we talked to Eric Sanger this morning a little bit about this, and, and he felt like if we put this, it'd be fine. Um, he said also, if you wanted to attach this as a supporting document, we could do the-
I would do that, yeah.
Deal?
But more paperwork, the better.
But he said just to try to keep this as a file. Uh, one of the things that he mentioned, um, was the possibility of having a generic findings of fact document that we might want to take a look at down the road here, but just, uh, if, if we ever get another capable project come through, we've got a generic form that this is what our findings of fact are, and therefore everything is following down, down that list.
Correct.
But this is what we typed up, if everybody has a copy and agrees to it, we can, we can proceed with it. If anybody sees any problems with it, I guess that's-
Was there a third page?
Yeah, you should have, uh-
Just the bottom of each, that's, I just want to, that's okay.
Did you miss a one?
My, my comment would be, if, if you guys approve, if you guys approve this, I don't, why can't we just start with this as our generic one? We need to start off with, if you guys go ahead and approve that.
Just send the-
Because we have a standard road hall agreement, too, that, um, does not have the-
Well, Eric said that he had sent some by, some suggested bylaws, that, that's what we was, that's what I was asking you about, we should go over them to see.
It's basically an index of what we went over, that's straight out of the ordinances.
So we had-
Look at page twelve.
We knew we had to get these done up, so.
Yeah.
So pretty much it's not any different than what you're saying there.
Right. It's everything we went through at the meeting, when we, when we went through the findings of fact.
And he just-
You kind of created the form when you checked it out, as far as that.
I did.
And then you would just, and then you just leave the answers that you already have, and you already have your form there, and just would put in new ones for the next time, yep.
Well, that's what we did, you know, if, if everybody's in agreement with this, I would say it's fine. Uh, my, my question is that if we want to use this as our generic form, that's fine, or do we want to go through and, and maybe meet with Eric as far as the different protocols and the, uh, procedures that, to use a generic form made?
I would send him that, um, without our, just a blank one, and just have him look at that and make changes, what he thinks is necessary, and comment on that, because I think you're actually pretty good there.
I think that's good, I'd do it that way.
Greg has, has had the bylaws, but we were already in the middle of this CAFO thing when we got those from Eric, and he says as a, as a planning and zoning board, they should be adopted, but it was like, I want to bring them up, we don't want to bring them up in the middle of when we're already working on this CAFO, because they're kind of serious, and there are things you guys have to take some time to consider, too. So it was like, why muddy the water?
Okay, looks, like Jamie said, looks as I missed one.
I think he has a copy of this.
I think you're going to be fine, we can use that as our canned draft document for next time, and just attach it to our-
Standard road hall.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance, he sent me the stuff, too, and I, I didn't get a chance to look at it this morning. He said there was kind of a generic written findings of fact in that deal, and, you know, if we want to, at that point in time, we can, down the road, we can look at that, too.
I think you actually did them pretty good, as far as six A, which is the question, and then you answer it. Um, and then you go to the next question, and you answer it. So I think his canned ones, or samples, are going to be very similar to this.
Just to correct you, Deb, you're going to have to get that wording right, Gary's going to read it.
I know it.
See, it's called it the road hall.
It's Hall Road. Say that over and over, don't forget it. It's a Hall Road Agreement.
If nobody has any more questions on this, I will take a moment. Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on this?
Are we going to accept this as our Hall, or as-
Finding?
Hall Road. As our findings of fact, and then use this as an attachment, I guess, okay?
Any other questions? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed.
Then we will put this in our file as the standard that we're going to start with next time.
Yeah. They need a motion authorizing you sign. The Hall Road Agreement, correct?
Okay, I would take a motion for that, to sign.
I'd totally.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion?
Motion was to have the chairman sign?
Yes.
I have a question.
What is it?
After, yeah, that was going to be, so we have to have it, do we have to have a motion to have it signed by the planning and zoning, and then when we go back into a commission meeting, do we need to address that again and have the commissioners sign it? Because in the Hall Road Agreement, it says Walworth County Commissioners.
I think that the, you're basically acting as the same board, and the one who has to sign would be the representative of the commission, right? So I think we're okay on authorizing the chair to, because you've approved the findings of fact, um, already approved the Hall Road Agreement without, with some changes, so I think you're okay as far as authorizing the commission. You as chair to sign on behalf of the commission.
So then, do we have to say anything? So we have, they've, we've met now-
Correct.
The extenuating circumstances to approve the conditional use permit? So do we?
That's already been approved.
Well, we have not, they have not authorized the chair to sign, because don't we have to sign the conditional use permit or not?
I believe so, and there, there's some letters that need to go out, like, to them, and-
This is just the Hall Road Agreement authorizing, and then what you would do is come back is, they've already approved the findings of fact, and then now you need to authorize the chair to sign the Hall Road Agreement, and then you take your conditional use permit, because all of that rolls into your conditional use permit, correct? And then if there's anything else that needs to be done to finalize that, then at next meeting, you would have that and say, okay, this is what else we need to have done, which I don't know, is there anything else that needs to be done?
I don't believe so.
I think this pretty much wraps everything up.
Would, on the conditional use permit, the signature on that, would that be done in a commission, not in a board adjustment?
Who has to sign on that one, Greg? Is it the head of the-
I think it's Board of Adjustment, and then I think it would have to be-
So on both, then?
We'd eat both, then?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that would have to be both. So that should probably go on the next agenda.
Next agenda, yep, because I think this wraps it.
Sign conditional use.
Uh, approval. Approve and sign on behalf of the Board of Adjustment, and then on behalf of the County Commission, correct, Deb, or Greg?
I think so, I think it has to go in there twice, under both, once under planning and zoning, once under commission.
Any other discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed. Is there any old business? New business? They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed. Let's convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the agenda.
Okay, so do we need to do anything as a commission for this? On the commission side for approval, in a meeting?
I don't think so.
I don't think so today. The next meeting will finalize everything. If we have anything else that needs to be done-
I don't think we have to go through the commission until it's actually been finalized by the planning and zoning board, which would be next meeting when you approve the conditional use permit, then the commissioners also have to approve that, and all this is attached.
And authorize the signing. Because technically, you already approved it, you just had to get the paperwork in order, get the findings of fact and everything into the conditional use permit, then you would approve the whole package, and then at the meeting authorize the signature by the, by the chair. And by the head of the zoning or not, is it two signatures or one?
Um, I don't-
We'll have to look, but we can get that in.
Next meeting's agenda.
Twice.
So then, as of next meeting's agenda, that should be all done, correct? And then would we send that to peer, or?
No, I think it just goes to the developer, they send everything to peer.
Forwarded onto peer, okay. But then it's out of our hands, that we've done everything that's required of us as a county, and that's what your goal is.
I'd like to add on, excuse me, on the agenda, I'd like to add on discussion about personnel policy and-
Number twenty-four?
That's right.
Number twenty-four, the landfill, that she had to take her kid to the doctor, and so, she was asked if we could just remove that, and she would discuss it, we got her, her packet, so we can look at that. Is that all right? Okay, I need, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda, then. Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed. Fifteen, public forum. We'll move to sixteen. Consider motion to approve county commission minutes for February twentieth, two thousand twenty. Everybody had a chance to go through those? So I take a motion? You got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed. Number seventeen, planes, have you all had a chance to go through them? Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passed.
We have some partial payment requests. First one is our record number five, six, three, two. And we actually had a plan, and we made enough in payments, hasn't made a payment since May, but we made a big payment April.
You guys don't have this one?
So back in twenty seventeen, we set a plan, and at the time, it was four thousand seven hundred thirty-four fifty-four, and today it's at four thousand seven oh four forty-three.
Hasn't gone down yet.
No.
You know, it looks like you made some big payments, and then you don't, don't make payments?
I, uh, well, I started business last, last year, and that wound up costing, I don't know, quite a, quite a bit more than I anticipated. The business is up and running now, and I'm also doing some additional exterior work, trucking it. Business is up and running now and I'm also doing some additional exterior work, trucking it to pick up extra money, so... I've been able to catch up on all bills with the exception of this one and I'd like the opportunity to... Deal with still doing it.
Well, do you think that you could up it a little more a month or not?
Yes, yeah.
What's... Like how much?
What would be fair to you guys? Is it two hundred or two and a quarter? I could probably go somewhere in there. If needed be, I could get up to two fifty. The taxes now are up to eleven forty-six a year.
So you was... You was on payment plan before?
Uh, last year.
Yes, he was. As of December seventeen.
I made payments.
He's not. Not really gaining on his past loss.
What's the commission feel? Do you think like two and a quarter, we could accept something like that?
I had in my mind, ask for two hundred. If you can pay two and a quarter, that'd be fine. I just do not have to do this again in another couple of months because I got it too high. What I was thinking.
What's the rest of the commission feel?
Your current balance is forty-seven hundred and four dollars?
Right.
And this payment... This payment plan is going to be just going towards this payoff of this debt, the forty-seven hundred?
No, it also goes to your current taxes also.
Cause you're really not... I mean, even that two hundred dollars a month. You know, that's twenty-four hundred dollars a year. That is actually quite a bit more than this tax, but we're looking at... To me, we're looking at all of four to five years to get that paid now.
I can make the current taxes.
So you're thinking that you can make the current taxes plus then you're just gonna pay additional two hundred or two hundred and quarter?
Do you have to apply to delinquent taxes first? Okay, good. Nevermind. I just wanna make sure, cause we used to have to apply, right? All payments to delinquent taxes first?
We can come and make the...
Okay, everybody can make the...
Well, I agree with Jim too. I mean, I just assume you make the payments, maybe two and a quarter, could that's another?
Always pay more.
You did like...
I was gonna say instead of two hundred, if you could make more, put more towards it.
Kinda like what Commissioner Schlemmer said, it sounded it. Two hundred a month and then must stay current on current taxes. So he would have to make his semi-annual payments, which would keep him caught up on that and then he would get done in about two years. If that's kinda... Is that kinda what you're thinking?
Exactly what I was thinking, if he could do the... Keep up on his current and set a payment plan on this.
Two hundred a month.
There is now a set of just forty-seven, those include this year's taxes, right?
Yes.
Okay, right. So I mean, you would actually, it would knock that off even further than that. I would have no problem with that.
So before we had the payment due on the fifth of the month, does that still work?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Commissioner?
Starting.
And we're changing the plan, we're taking...
Okay, I would make a motion that we change his plan starting... Would be the fifth of this month? Okay? Starting March fifth, that we change his payment to two hundred dollars a month. And then that would be... And then keep the current taxes up to date. So the two hundred dollars a month we go to is going to...
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
One second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Wabi Van Lu, y'all. And I'm taking over my cousin's... My cousin's house. Cause she moved out of state. And I wanna catch up with her taxes, cause I found out they were behind.
Record four zero six nine.
And so I estimated if I pay, I think it was a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and forty-five dollars a month, I could pay it off within the year.
That's just one thirteen.
One thousand three hundred eighteen.
Are you putting this property in your name?
Yes, it is again, yes. You gotta get the title switched over.
Can we... If she's willing to enter into an agreement to pay, that is fine, but it's not really binding because she doesn't have the obligation herself personally. She can voluntarily make payments on someone else's taxes. But I don't think we can really bind her because it's not her real estate. Does that make sense?
So I would say, I mean, this is... So it's like... So is it really worth going into an agreement if it's not binding in any first place?
I would say that, um... Is it a per-tax deed? You can make your payments as you see fit.
Right.
But I would definitely get that real estate transferred to your name if that's the goal.
Okay.
And then that way is the land...
So if it's been transferred, then you could come back and then...
And ask for the, uh... The payment plan.
Well, my...
That's right. Right? Taxes have to be paid in full before the transfer can be filed? I think so. But I had to...
When I get a deed, I don't question anything about the taxes. I'm just gonna record it no matter what, so I don't have anything to do with...
It's really just a contract for deed that leads with the follow-up, isn't it?
Yes. But I... You don't have a contract for deed in writing or anything, do you?
No, no. Which I have no idea what that is, but I don't have it.
Okay, just then you just have an oral agreement where you're gonna pay off the taxes and they will deed that to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, regardless, they're gonna do it anyway.
The total delinquency is how much now?
One thousand two hundred and eighty-two. Actually, that's not the only one. Two hundred forty-two is this year's current.
Okay, so we're at like eight hundred or something?
Yeah.
Eleven hundred. Yeah, we cannot bind you to payments on someone else's taxes if you want to voluntarily do that.
I just wanna stop the process of, you know, losing it.
And... But that's something that you're going to have to... I don't know how you can...
Well, if you'd pay the two forty-two oh six, that would...
That would just be the issue.
Yeah.
So then if I would be okay then if I start making the payments, I shouldn't have any issues?
That's a decision.
What does she have to do now to start the clock over, the five-year clock? If she'd pay your twenty nineteen taxes?
No. We always put the certificate on the oldest one. And that's where the tax is taken.
So she'd have to do three oh three.
If she paid the oldest one?
You can't pay that one until the other one's paid off. Because that's the one the certificate's on.
And you already have a certificate, correct?
Right. Our twenty sixteen.
So if she'd pay the five-year-old one, whatever, what do you do, three something?
It can't go that way according to...
The tax certificate's already been taken?
Yeah, because it's already printed, you can't... Now you gotta pay the whole works back before that clears that off.
So basically, the way I see this is I just need the commissioners to tell me not to take this property this year.
And reevaluate it. I would say...
If you can't write a contract with her, I need them to tell us not to take it.
Correct. That's kinda where we're at. And so what you would say is, is, um... Have her hold off for six months and reevaluate it because Nyla's required to take.
Scott?
Yes, Kevin.
My suggestion would be we approve, say, a six-month grace period to allow you to get a contract for deed. Once you get the contract for deed, within six months, come back here. Then we can set up a payment.
I should have it paid off by then, cause I can still make payments, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I should have it paid off by then. Close to it, anyway.
So can we do it that way?
Basically, Nyla just needs guidance from you.
A six-month grace period?
Not to take it.
Not to take it when she's going to take it until this month or next month.
That gives you six months to get the contract for deed in your name.
Yes.
Then if you need to, come back and we'll set up payment plan then.
Thank you very much.
So I would show...
Third month, I would.
So can I accept payments?
Yes.
And put it into a treasurer's trust either though we don't have a contract right now? Or does she need to come and do exactly that?
That's up to the commissioner. I can want her to do that.
How do you want that to run, Jim? Your read, I mean?
Which would be easiest for you then?
Um, it'd be easier for you.
First off, we gotta... The motion was to direct Nyla not take the property, right?
Correct.
That's what I...
Six-month grace period, I would say.
For six months.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor? Need a second?
Uh, one second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Well, that's all we gotta do is basically just say it would be... It'd be nice if we paid this kind of money, but we can't tell her that she...
Correct. Right now, your motion is to direct the treasurer to not take that property for a period of six months. And then the next question would be is, how do you want her to log in the payments? After you vote on this motion?
Any other discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
And then now you... How do you want her to do it? Do you want her to put it in a trust and then make lump sum payments or... Which is easiest for you, Nyla?
That seems to be the best for you.
Yeah.
We don't know when we do that, I mean, we make, pay exactly that amount and stuff.
I would... Rest of the commission feel that too. It would work best that way.
Whatever works best for Nyla.
We agree.
Okay.
Right?
You said? Thank you very much, y'all.
Record number four oh five four. Her total amount due is seven hundred forty-eight fourteen. And what were you planning to pay?
A hundred, a hundred a month?
How does the commission feel about that?
She would have it paid off in less than a year.
Yep.
About eight months. Just in time for next year.
I think you would accept a hundred dollar a month payment.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Do we want to do a date? Do we need to put a date to that?
Yeah, starting date.
Starting date? When would that work for us for the first hundred dollars?
I don't, um... I could do it this month, but I don't get paid until the third. My disability.
So could we do the fifth of the month? Start the fifth of the month? For everybody? Next month? You want to start next month or this month? Next month or this month?
Do you wanna start with April?
Next month would work better.
Okay.
All right, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
One second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good day, y'all.
Number nineteen. Consider motion to publish the correct wage for Chad Herman. What was it, just in the paper wrong or something? Yeah, I need a motion.
I'll make that one.
You got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
One second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
Yeah, that's just for correcting that. Can we correct the price in the paper also?
Is that a snow blower? They got... It was a pretty good deal.
Yeah. Wish we had got the check.
Yeah, we...
Do you think it's necessary, Gary?
Uh, I'm... What was in the paper?
Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand for that snow blower.
God, believe it.
You didn't get that much, did you?
Didn't get the check.
Sustained the rest of it.
I think the bid was two thousand six hundred and thirty-two or something like that.
Right?
Yeah, just added, they added a...
They added three digits to it.
Yeah.
Uh...
That just on... That wasn't on our official minutes, that was just what they reported.
So it was what was reported in the paper?
So, um... I don't know, we need to correct what they're doing.
That's very true, I guess.
Where was this in the paper too?
This was in her writing.
In its official?
No, it just was a mistake in the paper.
So that need the same thing?
No, it wasn't in our official minutes.
Yeah.
It was just in a write-up on the paper.
Right. The snow blower just in the newspaper reporting news. This was in our official, official minutes, right?
I would think that...
Oh, the stuff that we sent to them to put in the paper is what the...
This is wage deal was wrong?
I'm not sure.
Guess that's where it's at.
Yeah.
I would say if we have, like Jim said, though, if we have the snow blower in our minutes rate, it's right.
Right.
I can say if it was just for the paper, if we're correcting one, correcting both.
Any more discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Fast and furious. I have a, um... You'll see this, darling, at your spring conference. It is all of the welfare offices do their yearly reporting form.
We're not having spring conferences.
Well, you'll probably get a packet. You'll see this same thing down there. I attached to it too also, um... For you to look at later on exactly where these numbers are derived from. But I did kinda wanna go over a couple of things with you. Uh, we start with that county medical indigent expense. We only had line number four and that actually amount was two different claims. Our county mandated medical expenses down below. Um, we have the developmentally disabled, involuntary mental health, which is medical only on that line. And I'm gonna draw your attention to that, that's six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. The one underneath, number three, is the involuntary mental health, non-medical. This includes professional fees, attorney's fees, court reporting fees, mental board fees, quarterly billing for the, uh... MI cases, which would be Brad Telefino out of Aberdeen, I believe, is our, uh... Chairman of the Mental Board in government, since then he signs those papers. Um, services civil papers. But in that thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents, there were transportation costs of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. This amount was figured, um, by the sheriff's office. Um, and we figured out of the forty-four involuntary mental health holds we had last year, thirty-six of them made a trip down there. Um, that's at an average. Some a little more, some a little less, but that's at an average of four hundred and sixty-five dollars for each trip. This would include the wages of the officer going down, the gas, meals. And each trip, if everything goes... if everything goes smoothly, usually takes ten to twelve hours. Sometimes, it's not always that way. I've also been on board when no sooner has somebody gone through the process where they called and the officer is halfway back and they're making him return to pick this person up because they feel that there is no reason to be holding them. And I want to point out, too, that that sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars does not come under all of the mental health funds. That all comes out of the sheriff's budget, and it comes out on his travel line. It's a lot of money when you add that up together. You know, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Wowza. That's some big dollars. Makes me think that maybe it's time to be thinking, and I think other counties are thinking the same thing. It's time to be thinking, is there anything that we can bring in closer to our area? I know our north, is it northeastern, mental health, I believe is what it's called, that we pay fifteen thousand five hundred two every year. I believe at one time they had somebody right here in this area to help service that. We don't have that anymore, but we know, I mean, thirty-seven thousand dollars, that's wages for a person. We pay our county nurse more than that. You know, maybe it's time to think, is there a way that we can alleviate some of these costs? Maybe not alleviate, but at least bring somebody here local so that we aren't doing as many or we have somebody closer. Just a thought. Then we move to our county medical expenses on the other side. And our medical subsidies, our mental health center, we pay fifteen thousand five hundred two. Our community health nurse. Our catastrophic medical pool has gone way down. It's gotten half the money. When it first started doing this, it was way over a thousand dollars, and now it's five hundred and fifty. Our ambulance, and we do support both Moberich and Selby ambulance. And then our non-medical subsidies, line number one is to Bridges Against Domestic Violence, and number three is to both of the senior nutrition sites in our county. The last thing I want to talk about, and this one really blew my mind, is the reimbursements our client gets. A total of four hundred, four thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Out of that amount, medical reimbursements were three thousand five hundred and seven dollars and seventeen cents, and court-appointed attorneys was one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-four cents. When I had a chance to look at the individual payments and when they came in, there were only eight payments from the collection agency that's been hired by discounting for a total of one thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. I don't know what we pay them. I've never had a report from them because I believe that at one time we were going to receive monthly reports from the collection agency. But it... I know that's kind of low, and that was in a year. Eight payments in a year. And three of those individuals that made those eight payments were previously paying to the county. But just for thought, just wanted to let you know kind of where the dollars went. I think it's important. So, it was kind of mind-blowing to me to actually have a chance to talk with Sheriff Paul and figure out that transportation cost. Sheriff Paul came up with a way better way to track that. So, next year is going to be even more precise, and we'll know case by case. But it's a lot of money that doesn't even come out of that budget, and that budget for mental health is already pretty big, so... Any questions?
Anybody have any questions with Brenda? I'm trying to think on that collection agency. Aren't we doing a percentage with them? Wasn't that a percentage? So, they get paid based on what they collect? I don't think they do a fee upfront.
Well, that's probably a good thing.
Well, yeah.
Because, you know, in my eyes, all they're doing is collecting, you know, like I said, three of those eight payments for some people were already paying us without giving them a cut of that money.
But I think if I understood Becky right, we have to pay them a percentage of somebody who walks in the door and pays her without wanting to, then too.
No.
So, you don't?
No. It's all past. It was past due liens, and any new liens are not part of that.
But if I understood her right, if I owed money from years ago, that coming to pay it, we still have to pay that. If I was on their list, we still have to pay them a percentage of that, right?
If you had a new lien?
No, if you had an old lien, and you're saying if you come in on your own without them even talking to you?
Yeah, I don't go to them.
Oh, that I guess I don't know.
I think that Becky, the way I understood, she explained it to me.
I would think that you're right, but I got to pick and choose on that when we turn them over.
I don't know. I don't know what it's worth. Because they said, if I recall right, like Brenda said, they're going to give us a monthly report when we have had one, what, two or three years?
Have you ever had one?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I don't need to be a wise cracker over here.
I think they're going to get paid regardless of...
Yep, it was a previous.
Maybe that's what we ought to look into, if it's worth bothering you.
Well, I guess we should figure out how much they've actually got, and if there is worth it.
Yeah.
I would think we should.
Yes. Would there be a way of... I don't know how to say this, but would there be a way of doing that with them on delinquent only? In other words, if, and they're responsible for bringing them in, I mean, that's the only way they would collect fees?
I would assume you could negotiate that. You take out the ones that are currently paid.
Right, like Jim said, if he was delinquent and you come in and pay the taxes, if they're getting a percentage of that and they have nothing to do with it, it doesn't seem right.
Fair, yeah. And I don't know how that is set up, to be honest.
I don't know how it's set up either, but I know that I just had a huge payment that will show up this year on a medical lien for over five thousand dollars. They came in and paid that, and wouldn't it be sad if we were given that company money? Because when you look at it, they aren't really... Haven't made any more gains than the auditor's office collecting that money, so...
Well, maybe that's something we should look at.
We should look at, I think.
I mean, I don't know. When I saw that, when I saw the way I should look into it, I wanted to bring it to your attention because it seemed like eight payments for a whole year out of twelve months. And if, and if somebody's coming in, like I said, maybe they sold land, or maybe they had an inheritance, for whatever reason, they came in to lump sum money, always knew when we're making payments on their lien, and then came in and paid a big chunk. I truly hate to think that collection agency is going to get part of that over five thousand dollar payment.
Yeah, especially if they had nothing to do with it.
Not a thing. And that happens more often than you know.
I think we should all get together with Becky and one of us in and see what we're all collected and bring them in to that agency to talk to us again.
Yeah, see if Becky can give us a report or something, what we've got and what we've got to pay the elements.
All right. Doctor. All right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have this, one more abatement in the works right now. No more that I know of. This is also an exemption that needed to be grounded in, wasn't, for record number four five eight eight. And the amount is one thousand forty dollars and eighty-two cents. And those are for two thousand nineteen taxes payable of twenty.
So, this is the last one you got?
That's the last one I have in the works. You know, they find them, we find them a bunch, you know what I mean? When they all come at once like they, like they were, when tax bills go out, that's when they're discovered. So, that's, that's how we discover most of them. Sometimes we'll just stumble onto one that we discovered, but when they come in bunches like this, it's usually when the tax bills go out. Here's the hard thing with those exemptions, is when the assessment notices go out, it has to go out at full value. And then we approve all those at boards. And if it doesn't get put in the computer right, it just doesn't happen. You know what I mean? And that's, so then they're taxed on their full value that they should have not got. I'll remind you that that exemption now goes up for this year for twenty, page twenty-one from... The veteran part of it goes from the first hundred thousand millions up to the first hundred and fifty thousand.
My, my thing is, how much are schools and everybody losing with all these abatements?
Whatever your levy is.
I know, but how many abatements have we done so far?
I could, I can get you a count on how many we've done since when. So, the first of the year?
Yeah.
I would think around, around the neighborhood of a dozen of them. Because we've done like three or four, three or four liens.
As long as this is the last one.
Well, last one right now. I mean, it's never going to be the last one ever, but the last one that we, that popped up during tax bills, like.
All right, I need a motion for that, for that abatement. Forty-five eighty-eight. Number forty-five eighty-eight. Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here, none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. All right, it's ten o'clock, Gary.
That's for the bids?
We got to open them.
So, we got them?
Just going to open, Gary, the way they...
Yeah, we got a few bids going up here at ten o'clock.
This is for contract for services. First one is for rupture scale. That's all this is, for machinery, that pricing.
If we need it.
Right. And now that we're accepting, you're accepting all of them, correct?
Here, you're technically accepting the value for record.
Well, smokes, you want me to read all this?
I don't think you have to read them, do you?
This is just basically if we need that specific equipment, we're going to go to the lowest bidder of the ones who have submitted, correct?
And then if they're capable of coming, correct?
Correct. And then if they're not capable, then we go to the next one, so...
We have set prices for them.
Correct. That way, you already know ahead of time what you're going to have to pay. Correct, Gary?
And in my opinion, it would be a motion that you are in receipt of their bids.
Of their, yes.
For construction year twenty twenty, to be used, to be used in case of the need.
Correct.
And availability.
Correct.
Because rupture scale has got pages of different things.
Just less who they are.
Less who they are.
These will go to your office, okay, Gary?
Yes.
Okay, the first one is rupture scale.
Oh, just one little, one little quirk that we have some equipment listed on the, on the advertisement for bids. If there's other equipment that they submitted, can we use those?
I think the commission wants to, yes.
I guess, I just thought that's why at the bottom of it you had it blank, and I'm pretty sure that's why everybody else thought that that meant that you could put in if you want.
Now, that, that is surely a luxury, but whether legislative or not, it was wrong on that, I don't know.
I don't think you're going to have a problem because basically what you're doing is asking for what the cost of use of equipment that the county does not have but may need sometime within twenty twenty, and we're not saying we're ever going to use any of those. So, I think you're probably okay. Because all we're doing is we're entertaining a list of costs for use of equipment. And so what, like Gary said, your motion would be is that you just accept that list of costs that the highway superintendent would have on file. If we need to use particular equipment, then he would go to the lowest one available, but eventually he's going to have to come back to you and let you know anyhow, so... Because if he's going to say, I'm going to go rent equipment piece X, Y, Z, he's going to let you know anyhow, saying, yeah, I'm going to go out and it's going to cost this much money, and you can vote to approve it then. He's just already gotten the list amounts ahead of time, so that way he doesn't have to do it and, and slow the system down.
It's an elevated call for quotes, is what it is.
Right.
It's all...
I'm sure that's how everybody else took it, too. I mean, that you could add more if you wanted to.
Okay, then I'll do the type.
It is, next one is from Randy Volski, Excredi. Next one is from Shilling, Excredi. And then the last one is from Jensen, Rocket Sand. This is Jensen Rocket Sand.
I'll make a motion to...
Say it again, Gary.
To acknowledge receipt of the bids to be retained on file and utilized if needed.
Should we call them cost estimates rather than bids? Or do you think it doesn't matter?
It's really not a bid.
Yeah, it's more of a cost estimate when you say... Or what do you think, Gary?
Equipment cost.
Yeah, equipment cost. Let's call it that rather than... I don't like that term bid because it's really not a bid. We were soliciting costs on equipment to rent, right?
Yes.
So, what did you, what was your term again?
To acknowledge receipt of equipment cost.
To be kept by the highway superintendent for use if necessary. How's that?
Equipment rates.
Yes.
And then basically this will last for one year?
It will last for one year.
Okay, well, you made a motion, correct?
Sure.
I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
You have a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
If you're ready, Scott, I want to introduce Adam McGill. He is the project, he's the PLZ engineering. The email that the... The email that, the touch to what you're looking at, uh, Adam will be the project manager and attend commission meetings and other meetings that are requested for the K-4 pre, uh, pre-road inspection and post-road inspection. That was approved by the county commission, uh, I think two weeks ago. And I didn't give you the contract at that time, and that's why I invited Adam down. Uh, he'll, he'll go through the, the scope of services, and primarily it's the front page, uh, page two. If you guys approve it today, we'll have to put in an effective date. And, uh, and we'll have to sign. I've got the original here, we'll have to sign the original document to bring KLJ into the services. So Adam, how about it?
Thank you for having me here today, Adam McGill, KLJ. I don't know if anybody, anybody has seen this contract before, but I'll just start from the beginning and go through this. Our project understanding is that this is approximately a four-mile length of roadway that we're expecting to be used as the haul road for this project that's coming up. And so all of our fees are based off of this four-mile segment. And our billing will be at an hourly rate, so we'll just, you'll just use this for whatever services you need on, on this project as far as inspection, if there's more, if the, if the haul road changes, we'll change, we'll just use the hourly fees to, to build a project. But we estimate that the project will cost about nineteen thousand dollars to provide all of the services indicated here on this at the hourly billing rates that, that we utilize. Our current task is that, um, we'll review the haul road agreement and provide any engineering suggestions that we could provide on that, and we have done that. I have the, my comments right here, and I can review those with you if you feel necessary, otherwise I can, I'll, I'll go look over those with Gary here. Also, we'll attend up to two, um, meetings with the county op and Gary with the developer to be your representative on that, and also attend two commission meetings. These are just estimates of what we thought were necessary on this project. We'll also attend site visit with Gary, but if I have any concerns the county has on the roadway projects and document that, create that round inspection reports. And then, um, if there needs to be any budgetary adjustments for engineering fees, you know, we'll do those also and we'll provide, we'll conduct on haul road inspections, both pre and post-constructions so to document existing conditions and any conditions that need to be remedied after construction's done and, uh, that the con, the developer would have to be liable for. Um, and then we'll provide you an inspection report documenting all of that, those services and all of those conditions that we did sort of, uh, things that we are not including, we are not including geotechnical exploration. If some, if that determined, if, if it's determined that we need something like that for some extreme condition like a bridge holes and we want to discuss, you know, rebuilding this bridge, we would have to do a geotechnical exploration and have a different contract for a bridge repair design and so forth. That's not included. Um, if you need more commission meetings, we did not include any estimates, so it might, if it goes above the nineteen thousand, we would have to talk about increasing that, uh, cap on the budget. And, uh, we have not included any traffic surveys of the roadway in this. We'll just simply do a onsite observation, inspection of it, document with photographs and observations and provide an inspection report to you of the conditions. Do you have any questions about the scope of services? Included with the scope of services, we have our standard agreement between the owner and engineer. And, um, a lot of that, I believe you've seen these before in the past, we've done this in the past. But, uh, like I said earlier, we are, been billed at an hourly rate, plus reimbursables if needed on the project, and we expect the cost to be nineteen thousand dollars based on the services that we've done here, but you will, that we listed here, but you'll only be billed for what we do. Based, your figure for the beginning and the end? Yes, both beginning and the end.
Just another question, you, uh, in the original thing, I believe you said it's just on that four-mile stretch.
That was our initial estimate or understanding of the project scope.
So if, if that would actually extend, if they would add different roads or whatever to that, would it be expected to have more cost?
There would be, and it's an hourly rate cost, but we're expecting nineteen thousand right now based on that. If we add another road, it might, you know, it'll, it'll increase it. But I don't know what that is offhand without knowing how much more mileage it would be, can't estimate that.
If you'd like to interject, Marion, on, uh, from what I've heard that, uh, the first yellow line, the process has begun, the first yellow line has been indicated on the map. Uh, if you remember in the past that I, I informed the developer that I wouldn't be real crazy about making yellow lines on the map because that's gonna subject the developer into engineering services and more cost. So, uh, if it's kind of falling into fruition that, uh, this was drafted for a four-mile segment, and, uh, if any more comes about, then this project estimate would probably increase. Uh, I, I don't wanna jump over here, but, uh, KLJ has done a review of the, I'll let you explain that, uh, what, what we've been discussing is that has the county, uh, I think the county has committed to a surety bond for twenty-five thousand a mile? Has that been enacted? The bonding institute's been, it's on record?
Well, it's in that road haul agreement. Whether there's been any actual bonding, uh, I do not know.
Cause you guys kinda brought that up, that, uh, it, it's a luxury to have a surety bond in place in the event that the players aren't playing right. Uh, that was one of the comments they made to me, that, uh, that who is, is a surety bond in place. So I think you guys would probably end up, once the commission signs this contract and agreement, uh, you would follow up on ensuring that, that the bond monies are in place prior to startup, so.
That's on page thirty-five of the haul, haul road agreement.
That's gonna be signed at our next meeting. Actually, haul road agreement will be signed.
It, it's important that, uh, you guys have done your preliminary review on it, uh, yeah?
Yeah, I can go through the comments I had on it if that would be helpful for you at this time. Good? Okay. And just stipulates, I am not a lawyer, a engineer, so I can provide the best legal document as I can. But, um, let's see here. Sorry, as I go through. On page two, I was wondering, at the very top of the page, you indicate that the, you'll only include, include structures that are on the national bridge inspection, meet the national bridge inspection length of twenty feet or more. Do you have any, I don't know, I personally don't know if you have structures smaller than this on any haul roads, but I was wondering if you shouldn't include any structures, period, because if you have a smaller structure that receives damage, that's gonna be a cost for the county no matter what, whether or not it's on this register or not. And has to, that was one comment I had that was concerning me because if it's a structure that doesn't fall on this register or that gets damaged or needs, you know, by the developer, that, that should be repaired, but right now.
I would propose, uh, that the preliminary inspection would recognize all the structures that are in place.
Yeah, we would.
And, uh, initial inspection of the structure prior to, and, uh, and post-construction, uh, that would be handled, uh, through the process and in that thing, so.
Okay.
You know, a structure is gonna be a culvert, okay?
Any, any culvert is considered a structure. If there's a three-foot diameter, uh, a three-foot diameter corrugated metal pipe that's in place, uh, preliminary inspection, they would visually look inside that. And, uh, if it's, if it's intact and solid, it would be recorded in the inspection report. And, uh, the post-inspection, if now a sag occurs, uh, that would be by results of use. And, uh, that would be subject to replacement post-construction.
All right, um, my next comment is in section two point four on page three. In this section, it indicates that the, we need to have sixty days prior notice by the, before construction begins so that we can perform our inspections out there. And I don't know if, uh, it would be wise to add a, some language indicating that the developer is responsible to provide us that sixty days, if he doesn't, if he provides us, you know, thirty days notice. He's responsible to plan ahead, to give us enough time to do that.
Sixty, oh, seventy.
Unless this has changed since you.
Which, which point are you talking?
On section two point four, the second line, it says sixty days.
There's thirty post-construction, I believe. Thirty days notice of post-construction ending, right? If I remember.
So we're gonna get out too far in case there's more damage within that sixty days before they even start it.
Thirty days before might be a wise idea, sixty days is quite a long time.
It'd be on the conditional use, wouldn't it, that we set that?
What's that on?
It would be in the road haul agreement.
Haul road agreement. You would make that change in the haul road agreement if you wanted to drop it from sixty now to thirty, and that would be a benefit to the developer, I would think, don't you, Gary?
Yeah, dude would.
And it won't harm the timing with the engineers or anything like that?
Yeah, we're pretty flexible, we need to take three days advance notice to get out there and do an inspection.
So maybe make a note to change that to thirty?
It doesn't say that you ha, it has to be sixty, it just says no more than sixty days.
Yeah, maybe no more than thirty days would be better.
If that's what the commander wants.
Yes, Gary. Is that though, I mean, that's really protecting more of the developer, not the county.
Correct.
I mean, the sixty days, if we go and we do all the stuff sixty days, I mean, that just basically gives the county a more of a buffer zone if something would happen to that road in private. Not that, not that I'm trying to say that we're gonna try to stick with the developer for that problem. I'm just saying it gives us a little more time to make sure we get the inspections done. And yet, if there is problems that happen in that timeframe, that becomes the developer's problem, not the county's problem.
My, my opinion that any road damage prior to the startup date is Walworth County's responsibility. Is that a fair statement?
I'm not sure if it's a startup date.
According, to me, it's the, any damage to the road after the inspection.
Yeah, the inspection.
After the inspection.
The inspection starts the process.
Right.
After the inspection is done or after they get the results from the inspection? Because we can give them, we have to give them results in not less than ten days from that initial evaluation.
Cause the inspection kinda sets your, sets your benchmark of what condition the road is in. And even, and even though we're giving ourselves ten days to give them notice, we're going back to that date, cause that's when the actual inspection was done, so.
I guess hypothetically, if they wanna start first, uh, May, frost comes out fifteenth to April, and all of a sudden you got all these soft spots in there, and you already have your inspection done, then what happens?
Having a tighter timeframe, I think, is beneficial as far as getting a real good look at the baseline before construction starts. So we need to have the days.
I don't mean to sound, that the county's gonna try to, like you said, try to screw the developer, but.
Right, I mean, I just, to me, it's, it seems more like it's a benefit to the developer.
That's why I thought when we were discussing this, they said, when we were discussing it upstairs, I thought it was a thirty days.
There, well, there are some places where, where there are things that are thirty days, but this was always sixty.
Yes, Jerry.
But if we left it how it is, we can still do it, we're still gonna do it as quickly as possible. So, um, I think kind of what Commissioner Schwimmer is saying is that we wanna protect Walworth County, um, and if he's come up, but we're gonna, it's not like we're going to take an extended period of time to get things done or do this, so we would definitely wanna benefit ourselves as a county.
I guess that was, that's my point, is if we leave it at the sixty days, we don't have to do it at sixty days, we can do it at thirty days, uh, or whatever. We just have to have it done and make sure that they have the fines and present them ten days before they start. So, uh, to me, it, to me, it protects the county a whole lot better, having the sixty day period there, if for some reason we need to get in there and get the stuff done and get the, get the test results. That's just, that's my opinion.
Cause it shouldn't take sixty days for us. We just wanna have that notification far enough out so we can get things in place. So if it takes twenty-five days, that's just gonna benefit the developer, but it gives us as much time as we may need necessary to do that. Is that kind of a?
Yeah, I, I, that's what I'm thinking, we, we, we still have the ability to go closer to that timeframe. Uh, we just have, we also have the ability to go out farther if we need to, to get that test results done.
There, there's a luxury too, that sixty days in advance really fine tunes the startup date. They commit to the startup date. So it gives you sixty days in advance, it's gonna be understanding that, that May first is the startup date. Virtually, hypothetically, it can happen, but, uh, yeah, yeah, I, I like sixty. It, it gives you room for.
I just thought that we had changed it to thirty, I was probably wrong, but.
Is the hypothetical startup date for them right now?
Uh, nobody knows yet.
Any, any construction that's starting up while it's still frozen, there's, anything can happen to the roads in between till that frost.
Yep.
They'd be at their risk if they, if they're starting up while the frost is still there.
Yeah. Last one. On section two point seven, discussing the security. I just, it's just a small comment, I thought if there was no reference to appendix eight, and I didn't know how that security was developed until I read through the entire document up to the very last page. And so adding a reference to appendix H in the section two point seven, I thought was a good thing to point out earlier on here.
Add that where, after appendix E or after where it says?
Appendix H is the, the thing, but in section two point seven, you're talking about it, but there's no reference pointing you to appendix H, and so I just wanted to see that in there. And some of the language in this document is dependent upon, hopefully the, the developers are responsible, responsive person on maintaining roads and so forth. And in section three point one, um, the developers responsible for performing all the maintenance on the designated roads, but I just wonder if, uh, if you see as the county that they're not doing their job, do you have, can the county, can you direct them and require them to do something also?
There should be a section in there that we provide them notice, if they don't comply with our notice, then we have the right to go in and do it ourselves.
Yes, I did see that.
And assess the cost.
Okay, yeah, I did see that, so that's good. On section three point five, it's, uh, failure to maintain and repair the road. It's all pointed toward if the county does not do their job. But, um, I guess this is probably addressed elsewhere, but I thought the reverse scenario, if the developer's not doing their job, it needs to be covered sufficiently. But like you said, I think it is pointed out later on that, um, you can step in, do the work and assess that, figure out their security, that that's required.
No, it's in a section in there.
Pardon?
That is in a section.
Correct.
Yeah, it should be in that.
And I remember everyone discussing that too, it's in there. And I remember everyone discussing that too, it's in there.
Just want to make sure that you have sufficient safeguards. Overall, I thought the document was very well put together and had a lot, covered all of your bases on it quite well. In section ten point one six on page sixteen, there's still a reference to a wind turbine by minutes on there, so.
Take that baby out.
I think that was left in the event there would be some pain of a, a train needed for an air conditioner heater or something like that, it does make reference to heavier multi-equipment. And, but it simply wouldn't hurt to take that out. Okay with that, Jim?
Where's that at?
Section ten point one six, line three.
Just take out turbine, or?
The reference to the wind turbine, it's not relevant to your project here.
Okay.
And in section ten point one three, you know, the developer representative is blank, maybe put in parentheses that this has to be a local onsite person, not somebody, and I don't know where the developer's at.
We got, we have him named now.
Do you have him named now?
Jeremy Hoffman.
And he's local here then, too? Okay, good.
Name sexy in ten hours.
You don't have the newest copy?
Yeah.
I guess I don't have it.
Yeah, let me just, we just got a copy.
We just did.
All right, on appendix B, just need to clarify on section, section B, it talks about the initial evaluation shall be a geotechnical report, this will be a hall road inspection report, not a geotechnical report, it just need to change the language there.
That's in appendix B?
Yes, in appendix B, line before, section B of that.
Did you hear that, Dave, and Greg?
Shall be a hall road report.
Hall road inspection report.
You can provide that to the developer, right?
Yeah, I'll give all my comments to you afterwards, I have a couple other little things I'm not, doesn't need to be mentioned in this meeting. In appendix B, we have a, I'd suggest that we add a little bit more information about mobilization and labor equipment costs here, I have it written out, I have some of our suggestions, I can provide this to you, to you afterwards, if you'd like. Basically mobilization, labor and equipment costs associated with transportation to and from the project shall be included in the reimbursement.
The counties, the classes?
This was one of Todd's comments, so I'm trying to remember what he had here. They have some reimbursable rates.
They've got our equipment rate and they've got our mobilization, so we need to get the, the one that fills those to being fine, all those, to these guys.
Yeah.
You got an extra copy, huh?
What are you looking for?
So incorporate those changes, just, we're suggesting which will then be approved.
Make those changes, that's what the overall documents that would be nearing the signature.
We have a whole lot of.
But that wouldn't be with these revisions, like you're saying.
I'm not, that's right.
Yeah, I'm thinking, nothing here until we revise, based on the engineering side of it.
And then that would come, so if he provides copies to you and Greg, can make those changes, make reference to them, so Mr. Hoffman knows the changes that are made, and then we have it on the agenda for next meeting to approve and sign, so. And that would be the final document, and that's kind of how everyone was looking at it, correct?
Okay.
Also on appendix F, is that, is there a electrocommunication installation part of this, or is that a leftover in the wind turbines also?
It's leftover, I, I talked to Ken Wall, which in theory would be the provider, and it didn't impact Ken Wall, they op, they operate on specific standards set forth by the electrocommunication thing, and they felt that wouldn't impact them by being in or out of the document.
Okay, you just left it there because of no consequence. And I think there's a couple more small edits in here that aren't worth mentioning at this point in time, that I'll provide to, to.
What's your name? Debbie.
I have a question, so, will these changes be done then by the commission or planning and zoning?
Yes, Mary.
Planning and zoning, and then you shoot out that final document before the next meeting for commissioners.
To Hoffman.
Right, so that way they, and then we also, to Hoffman, into planning and zoning board slash the commissioners, so everyone has the final.
Because they'll have to agree to that.
Correct, Hoffman's would have to agree in order to sign, and, and you want to make sure that those changes are in there and you agree with them.
Are you gonna have to have a special meeting before then?
Nope, because right now we have suggestions that are made, and at the next meeting, we will have the agreement, should go out about a week ahead of time to the commissioner slash zoning board, that way you already have a copy of it, Hoffman's already have a copy of it, and if there are no further changes, approved and move on.
Then we can go ahead with that and the conditional use permit at the next meeting.
Correct.
Yes, Mary.
And just to make sure, clarify things there, so we've, the changes that we're talking about here, we go through the board of zoning adjustment.
Correct.
We approve those at the board of zoning adjustment.
Correct.
We go out of board of zoning adjustment, go into the commission meeting, we then approve
Correct.
The past provision.
The whole thing.
The whole thing, yeah.
Conditional use permit, that everything.
And we can do that all at the next meeting?
And authorize, as long as you have it on your agenda, and authorize signature of the documents by the county chair.
Should we just mention, I think it's already been approved, but it's gonna become part of this whole package, should we also mention on the agenda that the variance will be, everything's included in that whole?
Correct.
Everything's included.
Yep. The only thing that would throw a monkey wrench in is if there's a significant change to the agreement, that both sides are not in agreement on, but I think these are all minor little things that will probably not affect anything, it just cleans up the document more.
So, will we send it to Jeremy?
Is that kind of how you looked at it?
Yeah.
When we send it to Jeremy, shall we ask him to review it immediately, and if there are any problems to contact us immediately?
And highlight those last changes we made.
Those changes at the meeting.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd have him contact us ahead of time, so that way we could probably discuss a little bit.
Right.
Amongst who you need to discuss it with in order to have everyone on board for the next meeting, so it just goes right through without any change.
So the copy I send you guys will have the changes that I make highlighted for you, okay?
This engineering contract on those total services allows K L J into the conversation now that attend up to two meetings on the county payout for Gary and the site developer, so you'd have an engineering firm on staff that could be involved in, in comments between the parties, so.
Yes, Kevin.
So, the developers paying the nineteen thousand, not the county?
We'll be billing to the county, you're our client, and then you will submit to the developer for reimbursement on these charges, but he will be the ultimate responsible party here.
I believe there are instructions in there for the county to invoice the developer.
Correct, yes. Yes, Mary.
That's, that's why we need the bonds or.
Correct.
Charity bonds.
Yeah.
Couldn't wait for them to meet.
Make sure that you're covering, covered yourself.
Right.
If they don't pay.
I'm just gonna reference that K L J has assigned us a project number on the second page of the short form agreement, and just for concurrence with K L J, that any billings will have this project number attached to it.
Yes, it will.
For the accounting side.
Yeah, this project number will be referenced on all our billings to you, or to this project.
We need a motion for that, correct?
My opinion would be signing the contract with K L J for engineering services associated with road inspection agreement on three hundred and twenty-first avenue, assign project number two zero zero three, that's zero zero two six eight, ask one, and also date, this would be an attachment to the contract, wouldn't it? The short form agreement, I would say if you approve it today, would have today's date, and the motion would, to sign the agreement for K L J to provide those services. It does make reference to address of the owners in the seat of, that's, that's all, is it?
Correct.
Good?
Just time. We made the motion to do the agreement with you already.
Correct. We just need a motion to approve.
Prove and sign.
Authorizing the chair to sign the agreement.
We got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion on that?
Here, none, all, favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, say nay? Both say aye.
And this is the original copy?
Would you mind just sending a second copy that I can take with myself also?
It's third today.
Marcy, on page two, that agreement thing, we need to type in the date, or will we confess what in, or?
You can just write it in if you're happy, and write it in, that's fine.
Word of the book?
Yeah, it's on the first page of the short form. The very top of the page, there should be a blank. I already filled it in on that one, actually. Thank you. I look forward to working with you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's for you to keep, for your records.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be, meet me in, I'll be in.
Okay.
Okay, Gary?
Some little technicalities to go through, I got a utility easement from, for Jason Burns to occupy right away. It's got a signature block for the chairman of the board, I haven't, Jason hasn't signed it yet, we have received in two hundred and fifty dollars for, for the security as part of the program. South Dakota One Call, I tried to register the line location with South Dakota One Call in the event that somebody does work in the right way there, and South Dakota One Call said that the requesting party has to be the one to register it, so if you guys approve this in a motion, then we'll get it signed later, if that's good with you guys, that's all.
Okay, I'll take a motion for that.
How many motions approved?
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion? Here, none, all, favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, say nay? Motion passed.
And if you have no objections, I have a resolution that goes to the state to hire a consulting firm for our bridge inspections, and we do bridge inspections every two years, we're scheduled for inspection this year. It would be my recommendation we hire a park engineering out of Aberdeen to provide the bridge inspection services for two thousand nine, two thousand twenty, under a state retainer agreement.
What would that been, just like, I mean, I thought they did it in bridge inspections last year.
Two years ago.
And then they just give you, they just give it to you here.
They would have been performed in eighteen, and you would have got the report in nineteen. And in theory, you should have got the report in eighteen, but you didn't, I think. So, yeah, it's, it's every even number here, eighteen and twenty. So by virtue of this resolution, that authorizes park engineering to come in and do our bridge inspections, and that would be the twenty-one year report that comes.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second, any more discussion on that?
I, I did it last time, didn't they?
Yep.
Correct.
I don't know who did it.
Anything else?
That's it?
Here, none, all, favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, say nay? Motion passed.
I will need a copy of that resolution, if I haven't intercepted, so I can get it to the state.
Gary, I got one quick thing to tell you. On this new road between Jerome's and the motel, there's no, no line of place to stop for the traffic coming from the west. Is that the state's deal to put a, like, go across the road coming up towards courthouse here, there's a line way back there. There's no line in there of where they should stop.
I would go on an assumption to respond to your question that.
It's a state responsibility or county?
The line that's so far back on this is highway one thirty, a state highway, I think the state by, trying to think of the right word, may have put that line in there to make sure the traffic stops back for the doubles and stuff that are coming around the corner as, as a safety mechanism. I could certainly ask the state for an opinion on whether there should be one on the west side, I can do that at a minimal.
There should be.
Your opinion?
There should be. I know because I already hit a car coming around there with, so.
Yep, but I will consult with the state and see what we can do there, so.
I didn't know if that was the state responsibility off of the state highway.
I'm gonna.
Because they don't have it at any other stop sign, you know, like the stop sign in Shorty's, and that, there's no, there's no line, so I guess I don't know where they would start and stop, I guess that's what my thinking is.
There's one across, directly across.
From Jerome's. And I totally agree with Kevin, not disagreeing, I'm just saying, they don't have them at the other intersections that are.
And I, I don't know for a fact, but I think those white lines are, are even with the stop sign location, you know what I'm saying? So if you put a white line there. So if you split a white line there on the west side, then you're putting a stop sign in the location of where the gas people park their vehicles for work duties, you know what I'm saying? So I will, I'll discuss it with the state and see what we can do.
That's a dangerous intersection.
Anything else, Gary?
I'm done.
Yes?
Just to add on to that, it's probably gonna make a difference as far as what he's talking about, because of how Jerome is situated and the visibility, and how far you have to clearly see that way. I know what you're talking about, but.
Even trucks coming from the other way is making big.
Jerome's pretty busy there, you know how that fills up, even in the front there, people pulling in, making payments, and you literally have to pull up your, your stick, your nose out past even the stop sign to see if there's traffic coming.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary.
Hey, Gary.
Okay, we already spoke back to twenty-two. I've started advertising for a full-time custodian and maintenance employee. Have you guys read this, what they've typed up? For a job opening, full-time custodian. Walrus County Board of Commissioners will be accepting application, position of full-time courthouse custodian. The position consists of maintenance and upkeep of the courthouse, hours will vary as some tasks will need to be completed during business hours and others when the offices are closed. Therefore, some nights and weekends are required, pay depends upon experience, includes health insurance, life, you know, vision, insurance, self-cool retirement, paid time off. If questions apply, contact the Office of Walrus County Auditor. Applications will, will be accepted till filled. This county is a evil opportunity employer, do you feel this is what we should say?
Sounds good to me.
I don't know the exact, is it the end of April? When Dave wants to be gone, something like that, I think. He's going to, he's moving to Washington.
I haven't heard of a specific.
I, I think it's, I.
It gets to the end of April?
I think it is too, I think it's the end of April, he did, he gave us plenty of time. He's just moving, I think, to where his kids are, I think.
Like Idaho or Washington, somewhere off in the Pacific Northwest.
Yes.
I guess, my question is, do we have a sign, a deal from him that he is going to quit?
Yeah, because he's already told us.
He does have that, okay, so we can authorize her, okay? Uh, that sounds good to me. And we also.
Just want to start advertising.
I'd say.
I don't even think you need a motion.
Well, yeah, you gotta have a motion to advertise.
You have to know, oh, we're advertising for position, so yeah.
You may add a motion, Jim?
Yep.
To advertise? Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second it.
A second. Any more discussion?
Who's generally used to.
Let's finish the motion.
Well, I guess whoever's on the courthouse, on courthouse committee, I would think they would be the ones who, I don't, it doesn't matter, who do you, who do you guys think? It doesn't matter, I guess.
Will you do it the same as we did the highway superintendent?
Oh, it must be that way. It's all good. Anything else? Here, none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed. Okay, number twenty-four, Kevin.
I was wondering if there's any way that we can put in the handbook for anybody that's terminating, that we make a requirement to have an exit interview.
Is there already language in there about exit interview or not?
No, not that I know of.
Yeah, I would, that's a good recommendation.
Because we're having such a turnover, I think if we had an exit interview, we might be able to find out why there's such turnover.
You can't mandate that, though, you.
Sure. It's part of the, they don't have to comply with it, but we would offer that they do the exit interview.
Can we make a stipulation that their final paycheck is?
I don't think so. I don't think we can do that.
They've already earned their wages.
But if it's part of the, if we put it in there that it's part of the hiring process that they agree to it, that upon their, upon leaving, that it's part of the process.
I can check into it.
If they put that in there as a stipulation as hiring.
I guess I would think, I would check into it before you, before you.
I'll look into that.
Don't you think, I mean, that'd be.
Well, I was wondering, that's fine, I just, we're having such an issue with this.
I'll look into it and find out if we can require that as part of our employee.
I mean, we can always ask, but I know a lot of times they're gonna say, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything, but if they know that their final paycheck is gonna be dependent on it.
I guess I don't think that's gonna.
I don't think it's gonna fly, but I can check into it, to be honest. We can, I think that you should put in there that we are going to start doing exit interviews as part of our policy with regard to employees leaving, even if we can't hold them to it. I think you should definitely put that in there, and then make sure at least the attempt is made to do the exit interview.
Well, you check into that, and then I think then we should, then you should follow up with.
Yes.
I guess I would.
Let's set up a committee or something, you know.
I would say the department head and the commissioner who's in responsive, or commissioners who's responsible for that, that way there's feedback from both sides.
Right.
Is that something that would be acceptable to you?
My only thing is, would, would they be willing to speak more without the department head being there?
Or you could do the exit interview, could be just with the commissioner who's responsible for that department. Whichever way you want to do it is fine, whatever you think, and we've got some time to think on it.
The department head is their boss.
Correct. However you guys want to do it.
I think Jamie should check into that first, and then think about how, how we want it done, and then, then we'll talk about it again, is that fair enough?
But I, I think we need to definitely put the, in there.
And then once we do put it in there, we definitely need to make sure we enforce it.
See, anything else, Kevin?
Nope, not on that.
Alright. Then we'll go to twenty-five, old business.
I've got one thing, I, I was gonna call you Josh, but I did, Scott from McCarthy Architects, he did call me on Friday, he's gonna have, I guarantee it by Friday, he's gonna have everything drawn out, he's pretty sure, he said, I think it's gonna be at six million or a little under. That's.
For what size?
Thirty-two. But that's everything, so, I guess he's, said he's gonna have it, I just wanted to let you know on that, so. Alright?
Yep, thank you.
That's all I have. Anybody else? New business?
Just on, put it on record, Governor Noel give the state employees Good Friday and Easter Monday off, so just put that on the record, we follow what the state does.
Anything else?
I do have one thing from the weed board. There is a new noxious weed out there, Scott Zambro went to the weed deal, it's called Palmer Amarinth, or something like that, it's kind of like pig weed. It's not on the state's noxious weed deal, but they said we can put it on locally, and they contacted some other members of the weed board, we will be putting that on local, it makes no difference right now if it's on there or not, but it could affect it down the road, so.
And there's been some involved.
There's been six, six producers that have had it, and it's come in off of soybean seed or something, but just let you know that the weed board is gonna put that on there, so.
They've discussed it quite, quite a bit at every, one of the Missouri Valley meetings, they've talked about it.
But it's gonna have to be, unless it is locally obnoxious.
Okay.
So that one, and then I was just curious on where we're standing with the Stewart lawsuit deal.
Stewart, or from?
The people.
The people.
I talked with the attorney for Stewart's, and right now, and I talked to Commissioner Shalomar, he called, we're just waiting to see, I don't know whether they're going to press forward with it or not, the reason they filed their petition is because there's a time requirement, that once it's, the, once we made an approval, then they have thirty days to file a petition, I don't know whether they're going to proceed on it or not, also spoke with Mr. Hoffman and let him know that too. Right now, we don't need to do anything, it's kind of wait and see what they're gonna do, if they're going to do anything.
So is approval gonna start next meeting, when we sign everything?
We still march ahead like we're gonna do it.
Or is it already signed, or is it already starting, their thirty days or whatever?
No, they're thirty days to file their petition, which they did, to have it reheared by the circuit court, but I, like I told, I think I told Commissioner Shalomar and Mr. Hoffman, we're still marching forward like this is a go, that's out there, that's up to them, but we are still marching along like this is still going. And that's kind of what I told you two, wasn't, we're still moving along, like it's not even there, the ball's in their court, if they don't do anything, we're still moving along, so.
Anything else? Take a motion to, put a motion to adjourn, I need a second.
Second.
I'll just start to move.
All, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
They had to exit strategy before we even got the motion up.
What's that?
I don't know what you said, but.